Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:11. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, saving the day. Okay, we have no adjustments that need to be made?
No adjustments, just starting a little bit late. We did have through three student disciplinary hearings before this meeting that were able to accomplish. So, big thank you to the school committee for coming in early to have those hearings.
Sorry. Got two copies here. Okay, so moving on to approval of minutes. We have Monday, June 5th, 2023, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, executive session at 4:15 PM. Monday, June 12th, 2023, executive session at 5:00 PM. The same day, Monday, June 12th, regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, regular meeting at 10:00 AM. Recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve?
Thank you very much, seconded by?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? All in favor. Public comments? We don't have anybody here with us, is there anybody? Nobody, okay, well, I hope you guys are watching at home. You're nice and cozy, listening to this brand-new school year starting. No communications, no committee reports, superintendent reports. Matt, it's all you?
Sure, I want to start off, as you approved those minutes, you saw there was a school committee meeting back in July 12th. We had that meeting because we had some challenges that we had with our hiring, especially around the hiring of ed techs. And so, we went, made a presentation so that we could be able to make some adjustments in terms of ed tech pay structure for this upcoming 2023-2024 school year. As part of that, we also kind of put together a hiring campaign. That was something that we had first brought up at the Special Education Advisory Committee last spring. And so, we put that into action. I know the hiring campaign that we did with the Special Education Advisory Committee did not really focus on compensation. We took care of that with July 12th. And so, we did put our hiring campaign into full gear. We were able to utilize the career fairs, the career fairs that are offered each Thursday with this, at Sanford Community Adult Education. And so, we did go through and advertise those heavily at the end of July, as well as the beginning of August. We were able to advertise those, and we also were able to have interviews on the spot. We had interviews on the spot for custodian positions, for food service positions, and for ed tech positions. I know Jason Dudley from our Facility and Maintenance Director found that to be very helpful. I know David Bogar, our new School Nutrition Director, found that to be very helpful. And I know our Special Education Department found that very helpful. We were able to conduct interviews. Even though that career fair got done at 5:00, we stayed much later to conduct those interviews. We had over 30 people attend. The second, the first one in August we did was more geared towards substitute teachers. And so, that hiring campaign for us has been very, very helpful. As we sit here today with school opening up next week, we're sitting in better shape, especially when it comes to our food service, our custodians, and our ed techs that we've ever been. We still have a few openings that we're working hard. We have received some late resignations that have come back where we've had people who have moved or taking, moved, and therefore, opening up their positions. I want to thank our administrators. I want to thank our teachers and staff who've come in to serve on those interview committees. We've got that into full drive. I know that we have a lot of positions in the pipeline that were ready to be filled. A couple out there that we're still waiting on. We had a resource room teacher over at Carl J. Lamb for grades K through 2, but the candidate that we had decided to take another position in a different district that was closer to our home, that we lost out there, understandable. We're working hard to find a plumbing instructor at SRTC. I think we do have an option that we're looking at that I think is going to work out nicely in that situation. We do have an open position at Sanford Middle School for the Behavior Interventionist. That is something that we've not been able to attract interest in. We also have a Esser, Esser School Counselor position at Sanford Middle School that's also open, that we're working hard to fill. And then, I just had a candidate that was all set to be a teacher at our Bridge Program notify me this afternoon that she's taken another position in another district. So, that's causing us to have to be able to do some switching around in the Bridge Program. And then, we also have a school psychologist opening that we've had for a while, and we are examining that to see that particular position. It is covered in our collective bargaining agreement, which is becoming a real barrier to us filling that position because other districts for school psychologists have pulled them out of their collective bargaining agreements, and that's putting us at a competitive disadvantage as we look at that. We do have a number of pending positions, as I mentioned, that are getting finalized this week. We are still looking for substitutes. We can never have enough substitute teachers, substitute custodians, substitute food service, or substitute nurses. We're also looking for a long-term English substitute for a maternity leave at the beginning of this school year. We did have an opening in our athletic program for fall sports. Our JV girls soccer coach had a change, a work schedule change right at the last minute. Not going to be able to fulfill that assignment. So, I know Athletic Director Zach Lemlin is working hard to be able to fill that position as well. And as I mentioned, Jason Dudley's had some good work in terms of filling custodians, but we also had another resignation today that we're now working hard to go into trying to fill those, fill that position. So, as I mentioned, a big thank you to all of our people who've been working hard to try to kill, to fill these positions, and for us to be able to set things up for that, for our hiring update. Any questions on the hiring update? Okay, last Tuesday, our administrative team, our full administrative team, spent the day down at York County Community College, and that was a very beneficial day for us. We're really trying to build that relationship and that connection that we have with YCCC. And so, it was nice to be down onto their campus. Also, an opportunity for us to kind of get away from our, to get away a little bit. We used that opportunity to prepare for the opening of school. We also were continuing our work on establishing our district in our school and program goals for the upcoming school year. We also used that time for a lot of professional development, setting the stage for our teacher observation and evaluation as we were conducting, documenting walkthroughs, those mini observations. And we also had other professional developments. So, a very productive day. That set the stage for last Wednesday, when we had a full day for a school committee workshop. Want to thank all of our school committee members for giving up a full day last Wednesday to come in. That was an opportunity where we were over getting an idea of our goal-setting process for this year. That's a very fluid process. We're looking at a student achievement goal of using common assessment data to inform instruction and provide support for students needing intervention through Tier 1 classroom intervention and differentiation as part of the MTSS process, looking to have all of our students achieve at least one year's growth. Our school climate goal is promoting a healthy, safe, and inclusive learning environment where students are supported through the use of positive interventions and supports to improve behavior and attendance, really trying to zero in on behavior and attendance. And our capacity-building goal is promoting a health and safe and inclusive professional environment for our staff, and really recommitting to our early release days, which, to do that in a way that's going to support professional development and really support individual growth for that. That was the backdrop for the workshop. We had an opportunity where the school committee met with the administrators from all of the various schools. We started with all of our three elementary schools coming in together. This was really in a conversational format where the schools were able to talk about their school strengths, and also kind of their recent work, where they've been, but also fold that into some challenges and needs that they may have as well, and to help their, that also leads to the plans that they have and the goals that they're looking to address those challenges and needs, trying to find out what the plan is of where we're going. And also, through an idea, I think, that the school committee appreciated for was also that awareness, but also what supports are probably needed. And that's something that I know, as we debriefed our school budget process, we're really trying to be able to get out in front of that a little bit sooner and not be in a situation where we're waiting till we start that process in late January. So, I thought it was a productive day. Following the elementary principals, we had Sanford Middle School Administration come in. And then, after a lunch break, Sanford Regional Technical Center came in, and Sanford High School followed them. And then, we ended the day also rolling in a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting. We used that as an opportunity to have special education also talk about, for them, what they're talking about in a similar format, what their goals were. And so, Special Education Advisory Committee recognizing and identifying strengths that include our special ed staff, the teamwork that we have between our schools, the community, and our service providers, also the work that's been done in curriculum, the expansion of the Bridge Program, and as I mentioned earlier, talking about that hiring campaign. I think that that led, that Special Education Advisory Committee work laid that work for us to be able to do that. Some of the challenges include training. That's something that the ongoing professional development training that is so important when you have some of the staffing challenges that we have, the number of restraints and seclusion. And then, we also talked about goals, and a lot of the goals for the school, for special ed were focused around professional development and really getting that training in, everything from the cycle of disruptive behavior and the six steps of challenge to executive functioning, and also looking at, we talked about the changes in curriculum that have been a real positive, but really focusing on the fidelity of that curriculum with the mainstream curriculum for that. The advisory committee, we do have, our next meeting already scheduled, that'll be for Monday, September 25th at 3:30. We'll be right back at Sanford Community Adult Education. The focus of that meeting is going to be roles and responsibilities. That was something that we identified to be able to help in the advisory committee to really focus in on the roles and responsibilities, to see if there was any opportunities there for us to improve that. And then, going forward, we have future meetings scheduled for October 18th, November 8th, and December 13th. So, that was just an overview. I don't know if the school committee wants to talk about the goal-setting workshop last Wednesday or anything. Have any comments regarding that or the special ed advisory committee?
I'll make a quick comment, just to let everybody know that the administrative staff has worked really hard to kick the school year off, and they are excited to see your kids, and they're excited to help them succeed. So, that whole goal-setting was just, you know, all the work they've done to kick the year off.
That's a nice segue right into the opening of school update. And that wasn't planned, by the way, that was not planned. But we start tomorrow. We have a meeting with all of our administrative assistants throughout the district. This Thursday, we have our new teacher orientation. That's a full day that we bring all of our new people in, beginning at 7:15 in the morning. They have everything from getting their pictures for their ID badges taken, introduction and welcome to our administrative team. And then, there's a lot of training that takes place on that day. Beth Laterno is going to have a training set up. And we also, a change this year, have instituted the Alice Training for our new teacher orientation. Remember, last year, we put a big emphasis onto that training, and that was something, right now, we don't want our new people to feel behind on. So, our SROs are going to be coming in in the afternoon. Our new teachers are still going to have some time to be able to spend with their mentors, and so, we're feeling really good about that agenda for this Thursday. We also have, this Thursday, is incoming ninth graders. There's also going to be open houses orientation. There's one that's scheduled for the afternoon of this Thursday, the 24th. Then, there's also an evening one. So, hopefully, that those times will be offered for families to be able to work around their schedules to attend that. Next Monday and Tuesday, our teacher in-service workshops for all of our teachers and our ed techs as we welcome them back. That all begins with a vendor fair that is at Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center in the Agora area. Big thank you to Cheryl Fornier and her staff for being able to set up that vendor fair. And then, that will be something, as we welcome everybody, in with a full district-wide meeting. Then, special ed will have a full meeting. And then, it'll be back into their individual schools, where for that are, for staff meetings to get settled there. The afternoon of Monday is scheduled for people to be in their rooms, getting ready, those ready for the upcoming school year. Tuesday, the 29th, is a balance of also having some professional development and some trainings that are going to be taking place. That way, you'll hear more of that from Assistant Superintendent Bousier and his report. We also will have some classroom time available then because Tuesday night is our open houses. Tuesday night, our open houses for our elementary schools, as well as Sanford Middle School and SRTC. SRTC also is going to have an open house that Tuesday as well, that Tuesday evening. Because Wednesday is the first day of school. A week from this Wednesday will be first day of school. On that first day, we focus on grades 1 through 9. That allows grade 9 to have the Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center to themselves. It also, and SRTC will also be going to school on that Wednesday. The following day, the 31st, Thursday, that is school, will add kindergarten to the mix on that day. So, that'll be, as well as the upperclassmen for the high school on Thursday, the 31st, that'll go kindergarten through grade 12. Friday will be an off day for everyone to book in the Labor Day weekend. And then, we'll come back on Tuesday, September 5th, and that's when we'll then welcome pre-K in. So, that's a opening of the school year for us in terms of what can people expect. It is coming fast for that. So, any questions on the opening of school? One of the things we want to be able, is this is going to be a negotiation year for our teacher contract and our ed tech collective bargaining agreement. And so, one of the things we have talked about at the school committee level is really trying to look at stipends and how stipends are handled throughout the district, pre-K through grade 12. What happens is, when you get into negotiations, those negotiations get to a point where sometimes our stipend review kind of gets put off. It kind of gets put on the back burner. And that's really not fair because of the timing of that. So, one of the things that we would like to do is get out in front of that and start a stipend review committee. That would be made up of, we would have representation from our SFT, from the, from the union, as well as Athletic Director Zach Lemlin. And we'd also like to have administrators as well, administrator from the high school, administrator from the middle school, and also elementary representation because one of the things that we've done is we've expanded activities and stipends for our elementary. And so, what this would do is, and also have a few people who are advisors, and joining myself and Cheryl Fornier, and we're going to need a school committee representative to also be able to serve on that committee. I think we were looking at trying to get that done a little bit before school starts. We're not going to be able to do that. So, now, I'm looking at trying to start that work probably in mid-September. It would probably be a commitment that would be after school for us to be able to get all of those people together. And that's when we'll start looking at everything in terms of our offerings, our system for that. We'll be looking at evaluation of the stipends and also trying to get an idea that if there's going to be any recommendations or changes, we can have that work done and lead nicely right into the negotiations, the upcoming negotiations that we'll have. So, looking for a school committee member that would probably be able to give up an afternoon to do that. So, if you're interested, let me know. But that's something we're going to be getting started in the middle. I anticipate getting started in the middle of September. And then, finally, also wanted to give an update on our mission and vision and our core values update. That's something that is a goal of mine for this upcoming particular school year, is we've really got to spend some time on being able to update the Sanford School Department's mission and vision and our core values. We've already started that work already preliminary-wise. We sent out a survey, a planning survey that we sent out to the community. We sent that out at the end of June. Our response was not exactly what we were looking for. So, we did extend that window into the month of July. And so, we were able to get almost 350 total responses. And just to break that down, because you have people who responded wearing a number of different hats, but we had 32 business owners. We had 60 community members that had no children in school, eight civic or government leaders, four elected officials, 83 graduates of Sanford Schools, 204 parent guardians of current students, 89 parent guardian of Sanford graduates. We had 30, 30 senior citizens, 33 support personnel in Sanford Schools, 73 teachers or administrators in the Sanford School Department, and we did have some current students who also took that survey. So, that's, that's just a starting point for us to help gather, to break that data down. There is a lot of data there that we are going to be able to crunch. And that will be, as I said, more of a starting point as we put together a committee to be able to look at the mission and vision, updating that. We're also going to want school committee representation on that committee as well. What I can see happening is that work in that subcommittee generating a lot of work and then sharing that in feedback loops, where I think we could be sending feedback loops to our different populations out there, our different stakeholders. You'd probably see some that would go right to our staff. You'll see survey input coming from students and families, and then, you also see it coming from the community as well. So, I just wanted to let people know that the, thank you for those who did take the survey. That's just as we bring that data down to kind of give us a starting point so that we can use that as a jumping-off point and be able to try to update that this year. Any feedback or questions on that?
I mean, I guess I would just say that we're all excited to start work on a mission and vision. It's something that I know we have definitely wanted since we've started. So, we're excited that we're, momentum is going, and we're going to get this done this school year. So, thank you for sending that survey out too, and for everybody that did it because it's, it's, we have, it was 300 and what, 300 and?
344.
I mean, it's a good response, so thank you.
One of the questions we asked is what people feel most proud of when they think of Sanford School Departments? And the top five answers coming from that were the achievement of Sanford students, Sanford's facilities, Sanford's staff, education staff, Sanford's Fine Arts and Performing Arts Program, and also SRTC. So, I think, as you can see, that's, that's gratifying to be able to hear that. And you're right, we're excited to get into this work so that we can be able to come back and be able to make sure, as we were talking about at the beginning of my report, where we had the all-day A-team meeting and then, the school committee meeting with our administrative team all day on Wednesday. That's something that, when we're able to have this all flushed out and finalized, that's only going to continue to help the great work that happens.
All exciting stuff, director's reports. Steve Bousier.
Okay, good evening. First thing I want to update you on this evening is the First 10 Grant. If you remember last spring, Sanford Pride Elementary School was one of three schools in the state of Maine that was awarded a First 10 Community School Grant through the Maine DOE. If you remember, First 10 Schools support children and families through the first 10 years of a child's life by creating the conditions where all children learn and thrive. So, when it comes, when you boil it down, it's about creating connections with families early and often. We're excited, over the summer, we were able to hire a First 10 Community Outreach Coordinator that was paid for through grant funding. And so, we welcome Shayna Palmer, who brings to the district a lot of experience of working in the community, working with families, really knowledgeable of resources. So, we're very excited to have her on board. The leadership team met at the end of July for a kickoff retreat in Augusta. And during that retreat, we talked about, there's three broad strategies that we'll be working on through the three years of this grant. And the first one is a comprehensive transition to kindergarten plan. The second one is coordinated comprehensive services, so connecting early childcare, health and social services in public schools. And the third broad strategy is partnerships with families. And so, we have those three broad strategies. One of the specific things that we are tasked to do first. And so, really, the first thing is working on our transition to kindergarten plan. When we think about transition to kindergarten, we think about kindergarten screening. We get it, that's really when our process starts. This grant is going to change our thinking a little bit in terms of getting us connected with families early. And when we say early, we're talking from birth to age four. What are those ways schools can connect with families to get them engaged with school very early? So, how do we do that? The second strategy is connected play and learn groups. So, we will be scheduling several play and learn groups. They could be housed at Sanford Pride Elementary School. They could be at the library, they could be at other spots. And the target for those groups are birth to age four. And there'll be an education component, a storytime for kids, a snack. And it's really an opportunity to connect with parents and connect them with resources early. And then, the final third strategy is a parenting campaign, and we're going to learn more about that later this fall. The next step is, we're meeting the first week in September to work on finalizing our action plan. So, a lot of good work, a lot of excitement, enthusiasm around that. This grant is centered at Sanford Pride Elementary School, but a lot of the things that we are going to be doing with this grant are going to have transfer, be able to be transferred to Carl Lamb School and Margaret Chase Smith School. So, we're really excited about that. To give you an update on our new manor population and our ESOL students, last year, we ended the school year with 38 new manors that arrived to Sanford last school year. Currently, over the summer, when we look at how many new manors we have on our books, we have 55. So, we have seen an increased population over the summer. We have four potential new kiddos coming in, and then, we also have four families that have also, we believe, moved to Lewiston. So, potential of four students coming in, four students coming out. So, our current total ESOL population right now is running about 111. So, that is a significant increase from our prior year. Today, I met with our new families at the Goodall Library along with Tracy Halasy, the principal over at MCS, and Laura, our data enrollment person, and Cecilia Sariani, our outreach coordinator. I shared some basic information about the start of the school year, including the start dates, bus times, bus stops, you know, what supplies are needed, meal information, and provided an opportunity for folks to ask question. We also put together printed material that's translated into their native language for reference for them as well. We also put together printed material that's translated into their native language for reference for them as well. In addition to the basic school, start of school information, we provide families with a boiled-down packet of information we need for the beginning of school year. If you know, traditionally, as a parent, I know I enjoy the first day of school, coming home after a tired day and have 12 forms to fill out. But we've sort of pared that down to what is a critical information we would need. And so we helped to get them complete that information so that will already be done for them. Like to thank you for the invite. We got an invite from York County Community Action. I think it was a very successful day for that. Communication is something that as a school department, we're gonna have to continue to work on as we communicate to our ESOL families. We've always communicated with our ESOL families. But in the situation we have here, it's volume. And so we have a number of new families that we just have to work to make sure we're communicating the information we need to them. And then also making sure that we have avenues for them to be able to communicate information to us. So just to give you a brief overview, what are some of the things that we use to communicate with these families? We have Language Line, which is an online, you pick up the telephone, you dial the number, and we're able to get an interpreter on the other line. We have our website translates into a family's native language. We use Google Translate. Our staff uses a program called Talking Points where we can text something to a parent and it translates into their native language. And then they also can text back to us and it comes back into our native language. We also have in-person translators that we also can reach out to through, York County Community Action has some folks they've been providing to us. But when they're no longer available, we have Catholic charities we can reach out to. So we do have some avenues. It's all things that we're gonna have to work through as we move along here. In terms of instruction, just so you know, we did add an extra ESOL teacher, Lenora Williams. Lenora will be primarily at MCS at this time. So MCS will have a full-time ESOL teacher. At the high school and at the pre-K at SRTC, Teresa Weber will be taking on that role. At the middle school, we'll have two folks that are splitting. We have Margot Longfish and Nisha McGuckin who'll be splitting that load there. And then Margot will go over, will go over to CGL. And Nisha will go over to SPE to cover that caseload. In terms of instruction, students that are new to Maine, new to Sanford, that are new to the English language, they will be pulled out for part of their day and receive direct instruction in the English language. That's for part of their day. The other part of their day, they will be in mainstream classrooms. And this is, reflects best practice. So we're giving them experiences in their close-knit, direct instruction, but also experience to hear the language, integrate with their peers that way. And that is based on best practice. Professional development, I'd like to thank the administrative staff, our administrators this summer, our ESOL staff. We've engaged in many conversations about, you know, what is the best plan of action moving forward to support our staff. Several of our administrators participated in professional development over the summer, so I'm just appreciative of that. So for staff coming back next week, we are providing for them half-day session, be about three hours, and the PSYOP model. PSYOP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. The PSYOP model is a research-based and validated instruction model that has proven effective in addressing the academic needs of English learners throughout the United States. So this is something that has been researched, it's used in school districts across the country. It's effective. Here's the thing, it's effective with our ESOL students, but it's also effective for all kids. And I think that's a message as we work with our staff, they need to know, good instruction for our ESOL students is good instruction for all kids. And it's gonna benefit everybody. So we're excited, we did bring in somebody from the outside. We're using our Title II Professional Development Funds to fund this person. We're real excited. We think he's gonna be dynamite to support our staff. He's also gonna come back and do some follow-up sessions. Specifically at MCS, he's scheduled. But there are other opportunities we're gonna provide to staff for some follow-up. The other part of professional development that we need to provide for staff is just that cultural awareness piece. The Maine Department of Education, they're going to be onsite for our second teacher workshop day. And they're specifically gonna work with our school counselors, social work, outreach, and nursing staff as a starting place to really talk with them about what are some of the differences you're gonna notice and how do you approach certain situations? And so we're excited to have them join us as well. The DOE is already scheduled to come back to MCS in September. And we're gonna look to provide other staff opportunities for training as we see fit, as we can fit it into the schedule, and as a need arises. The biggest impact, you hear talking a lot about MCS. MCS is probably our biggest impact school because we have the most students in terms of percentage-wise that are joining that school. Really, it's MCS is really the place that we're trying to get them set up for what they need with that. Any questions on the ESOL population before I move on to my other updates?
Can you just talk a little bit about 111 students and how and, or if and why and how that might correlate to additional funding?
111 students, through the EPS formula, we will, when next year's funding comes out, we should see an increase in our funds that we're getting for our ESOL students. Because we have reached that 100 threshold, I believe we are gonna be eligible for federal funds through Title III. Those federal funds through Title III will not be allocated for this school year, it will be for next school year.
Is there not a waiver process due to acute circumstance?
That's, the next question we're gonna have in September, once we have our final number, I think the next question we're gonna have for the DOE is, hey, we've had this increased population, what funds may be available for us through that process? There's no guaranteed funds, but I think there's an impact here where we can petition the DOE for additional funds and see what happens. Matt, you wanna try and?
No, I think you found that there's no guarantee for that. But I think last year, they were able to, there were some funds for school districts in similar situations. So we're gonna be able to make that request and also be well-positioned if they are for us to take advantage of that.
Yeah. And I'll be on the lookout for any grants that become available. Sometimes what happens is we get homeless grants that come out. And sometimes what they lump into that homeless grant is the ESOL population that supports. Sometimes they say, you can use it for this or you can use it for that. So we'll be looking for grant opportunities as well.
And just so people know, if we do qualify for Title III funds, that's not a, I want people to pair your expectations. That's not gonna be a lot of funding coming our way. But as you know, here in the Sanford School Department, we take advantage of all the options that we have to be able to access funding.
The Title III funds that we have that would come to us would cover professional development. They would not cover position, based on what I've seen from other districts get for Title III funding, so.
I would just say lastly, as we continue to engage in work and bridging those barriers between, you know, just the families, the different cultures plugging in, et cetera. You know, my recommendation would just be not reinventing the wheel and using the resources that are available to us. I know York County Community Action will continue to have a cultural broker on staff. Additionally, you know, within the Portland area, there are a variety of agencies that are always happy and wanting to come to provide that educational component. And lastly, the communication from home to school to home. You know, in the event that you have like an acute situation, like a sick child, for example, they, they will not receive your messages if they're not on a Wi-Fi connection. So that is something that I would be mindful of as a school nurse.
Transportation.
Can I just say, I, you know, with the additional students, it is a lot of work for all of the students since we have over 3,000 in the district. But it is from everything that you just reported on, it's amazing of all the work that was done to sort of welcome families in and make them comfortable and all the efforts that are being done with everything with the school department with these families. So thank you and everyone else that has helped with this. And for the, you know, the staff and all the trainings and every, I feel like we are very prepared for it, so.
And we were driving into the high school last week, it was Monday or Tuesday. And, you know, out on the athletic field, and there's just a testament to the can-do attitude by our staff. Athletics was something that Zach Lemon called up and said, what do we do? What do we do? And, you know, we dug up our sleeves and really made it happen. And that, the school played a role in that, but also the community folks played a role in that. And I think that that is something that's unique about Sanford and that the school's not in it alone. The community stepped up and, you know, they, hey, we need, we need these physicals. Oh, we went to, we went to the medical, we can take care of that, you know, and your sneakers or whatever. You know, the community really stepped up with that, so.
And yeah, and I want to reiterate that. I know, we know that in Sanford, how special the infrastructure and what we have. But there's people who are connected to this work that has seen it in other communities and other districts. And they constantly are singing the praises and kudos of Sanford for the ability for us to be able to come back and coordinate that. And that's obviously a big thanks to the school department and the people who are involved in that, Steve and his team. But that's, that's a community piece that I also think is, just speaks to Sanford and speaks to it. So a lot of work, challenging time for certain, but I also think it's an exciting time, one that we can look forward. And at the end of it, there's gonna be a lot of benefits that come to the school department and our students and our community.
Transportation. We did send transportation information out this afternoon through email. Parents receiving the email with their student's log information and the link to Versatrans. So a parent can go in, put their student's student ID number in, and they'll be able to get real-time information on their bus route information. It was a little later than we had hoped today. There was a issue with Versatrans, but all indications are it's working okay as we speak. Tomorrow, we will be sending parents a text message, letting them know that the bus information is on the website and to go on and look at it. We did it in a staggered way on purpose to help alleviate the phone calls that go in to our schools, into Ledgmere, to make sure when somebody answers, somebody's there to pick up the phone. So if you're wondering, well, why didn't you send the text message? That's why we did it. We're being very mindful and purposeful of that. We will put a printed copy of the bus routes towards the end of the week. And the reason why they'll be printed at the end of the week, that's because the times may fluctuate as we make some last-minute adjustments as parents call in and make those changes. I think my impression from when we used Versatrans last year, it was, it was effective. And parents found it useful with that. We are beginning, oh, go ahead.
So when they send out the text, will that text include the link for the app?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. We'll have, we'll bring them to our website, which has the directions all on there for them, so.
I also have a question. In the scope of transportation, you know, we talk about that communication piece when an accommodation needs to be made or you're accessing the transportation. Given the just climate of shortages with the bus drivers, is it, would it be helpful to know who's not planning to take the bus and how would you like that information communicated?
We plan for all students taking the bus. We always plan that because if something happens and Johnny's situation changes, we wanna make sure they're in the system. What happens, once the school year begins, they will look at ridership numbers and then they will adjust routes at that time. Already built in their formula, when they put the routes, they already don't plan for everybody. So there's a percentage they use based on last year's ridership, that's how they use. There are some situations where kindergarteners, we keep closed tabs of kindergarteners. And so we already have that information. I think we just wanna know from parents if they wanna ride the bus and they're on on it, that's what we wanna know about. So if they go in the login to Versatrans and they don't have a stop, then we, give us a call and we'll fix it and we'll get you up to date. Speaking of how we're starting here in terms of staffing for transportation, we're starting in terms of the number of buses on the road. We are starting in the same point we were in last June when we ended the school year. They do, Ledgmere has brought on additional monitors. They have added additional van drivers, which is going to be a help. They do have some folks in the process that are gonna be certified drivers, but we are still several weeks out. So we'll keep our fingers crossed, we can add drivers as soon as they get licensed. I have had several conversations with Ledgmere this summer about the fact that they are not meeting their obligation based on the contract. So we have been pushing our unhappiness with that to them. Our contract with Ledgmere does end at the end of this year. And so we'll be going out to bid in this fall with the hopes of having our plan for transportation moving forward in place before budget season starts. So I do feel Ledgmere, they have been responsive. They are, they have been at the career fairs. They have their bus out on 111, not 111, that road there. They have their bus out. They have, they have fired, they have hired a recruiter. So they are trying. And so I think that we'll see where we go and keep our fingers crossed that, you know, these people they have brought in follow through. The problem is they bring somebody in, they get them to the process, they get them hired to become a driver and one of their veteran drivers retires or moves to Florida or, you know. So similar challenges that we have and not, there's similar challenges all over Southern Maine. Any questions in regards to transportation?
I do just, you know, for the multiple people that are watching this from home, the bus driver hours, just in case we get somebody, there typically are.
Bus driver hours?
Hours. So like, it's not a full eight hours in a row, right? It's like a?
Nope. Usually they come in about 5:30 and they're done about 9:00. And then they usually come in on a normal day, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they usually come in about 1:30. And so they work 1:30 to 4:00, 4:30. But then there's also opportunities they can have to do trips. So, and those trips could be during the week after school. They could also be on Saturdays or Sundays. And so there's also opportunities for them to work in that capacity as well.
And do you know if there's opportunity for people, let's just say they prefer to do the afternoon because they work another job from 1:30 to 4:00? Do they do sort of like split shifts or like co-ed job share or job share?
If they're interested in job sharing, I would say have them reach out to Ledgmere directly.
Okay.
We've brought people on just to be sports drivers, but I would have them reach out to Ledgmere, yeah. And they did raise their rates, that's the other piece, they did raise their rates. They're bringing people on to drive school bus, a certified driver, right at around 24. And after they've been there a year, it's up to 25. So they did raise their rates to be more competitive with that. My last update this evening is in terms of our vape task force. Over the summer, members of the middle school, the high school and SRTC administrative team met to discuss the procedures we follow when we have a vape infraction. We have also invited Southern Maine Healthcare's new tobacco prevention coordinator, Haley Wood, and Sanford School Department's new drug and alcohol coordinator, counselor, Susan Lombardo, to join in our discussion. It's great that Southern Maine Healthcare has hired a tobacco prevention coordinator. She added a lot of resources to our discussion. And Susan Lombardo added a lot of discussion in regards to, you know, those students who are addicted. What do we do with those students? So basically, we looked at what we did in the past and we looked at what do we wanna do in the future? Looking at a couple of areas. The first thing is alignment. Are we aligned in our practices in, from grades five through 12? We also looked at education, what are we using for education components all along the continuum? So if a student who offenders the first time, what does that look like? If we have a third time, what does that look like? Also looking at counseling and support. When is it a general counseling conversation? And when is it we identify students like, this student is addicted? is it we identify students like, this student is addicted, this student needs some substance use counseling, and so when do we involve Sue Lombardo in that conversation? So we've, we have a matrix or a rubric that's been developed. It's in a rough draft state right now. Our next meeting is Wednesday at noon, and at that meeting, we hope to finalize that to a point where we can roll that out and begin to use that during this school year. But some really good work over the summer. Really, I can't say enough about Southern Maine Healthcare and the opportunities that I see there to provide some general education for everybody, but then some more intensive education for those kiddos that are well down that road of use with that. Our next full vape task force meeting will be on Tuesday, September 12th, at 2:45, just to put that on your calendars. And I will roll out that rubric once it's, we get it to a point where it's ready to share, I'll share that with you guys as well. Anything else this evening?
I just, I have a question about the vape prevention. I can't remember what meeting we were in recently, but is the task force considering reaching out to our local elected officials about starting that conversation about a potential ordinance of not having flavored vape products in the city of Sanford?
I think our first task force meeting, I think what I envisioned that first meeting being is looking at the work that the committee did over the summer, to get some feedback from the group, just to share the resources we're using, but then determine what's our next step? What's the next thing we want to do? I can't speak for the committee, but I think that's definitely something that we want to bring up to have a conversation about as we move forward.
I also think Southern Maine Healthcare with a tobacco coordinator can be a resource to really help lead that.
Yeah.
Just tagging along with what Jen just said, just because it triggered me, that I don't think there would be harm in inviting maybe one of the city officials or one of the city councilmen to this meeting in September, just because I think they're all very much aware that, of the vaping problem in the schools, and having them there, why wait till the October meeting? Just, is really going to just help us all sort of improve and open up the line of communication.
I think that's a great idea.
Anything else? Thank you, Steve. Moving on to new business, Cheryl Fournier. Got several recommendations you want to make.
Okay. How are you guys tonight? So the first thing on, for me to talk about is the subrates. We are, we always change the long-term teacher subrates based on the current union contract, because we use the lowest, if you come in as a bachelor's degree with zero years of experience, that's how that column, which is the third column over, that has a lot of the red in it. So that amount is being changed to the new contracted rates. So in, in addition to that, I actually went out and talked to all of our neighbors and find out what they are actually paying substitutes. And we need to change, or my recommendation is to change the teacher daily rate, because when I look at some of our neighbors, we were kind of behind on one or, or at the same. And so, because we've had trouble keeping and trying to have subrate, subs, we wanted to make sure that we actually changed that. So I would propose to change the no teaching certificate, which actually should be both. I missed the second one. Should be at 115 instead of 110. And that will bring us to close to our neighbors or better, other than Bittiford and Saco, which is much higher than us. So that would be my proposal.
And I'll just add, typically, that is outside our range of substitutes, Bittiford and Saco. That's usually someone that's not in our, in our area that we get a lot of substitutes from in that area.
So. And it was mostly noble that we're competing with, so we wanted to make sure that we were at least the same as them, if not better. And so that was our proposal. Any questions?
No, I think you can just say, do you want to, I think the question is, do you want to present them all, and then they can take action, as opposed to taking action individually?
I think all you need to do is, as presented, the, except for that, we need to make the adjustment to the second one down, which is the no teaching certificate, but have a bachelor's degree. That, that's, that one's at 115 also, to keep it consistent.
So I make a motion to accept the substitute pay rates as presented by Cheryl Fournier.
Okay, all in favor?
Who seconded that?
Amy.
I do want to point out, too, one of the things that's discussed is the changes that we made for ed techs. What happens is, there may be situations where we have an ed tech who's not a special ed ed tech, who gets moved into one of those areas to cover, that does get the increased differential. And I think it's important to recognize that people will receive that increased differential when they get put into, if that happens, when they get put into those spots. I know that, I know that's something that's come up, and I want to assure people. And then there's other situations where sometimes in subsituations, the ed techs really take a step up in those situations, and those may have to be, we have the CHITS that are available in those particular situations to help with that, if there's any inequities there.
Yeah. And the way the ed tech portion was written, it was if it's more than five days, because if someone's just out for a couple of days and you're moving over to fill in that position, it's, it wasn't to be increased until it's been five days, because that's how our other contracts are written. So if you're in there for a day, because that would be an administrative nightmare to keep track of. So we only, we had to, we did it as five days or more. And then they get moved over to the new rate.
That may be something we want to discuss. I think that's, that may be something that we want to revisit as we look at that, just because of finding that balance between administratively debalancing, but also making sure that that's going to, because I think we'll have to check on that. In the past, that has been something that's been utilized quite often, and we want to be able to do. So I recommend we look into that further, Cheryl, and that may be something we can bring forward at the September 11th meeting.
Okay. Just to, to add on to what Mr. Nelson was just saying, I think it, to help with culture and climate, that we knowing, you know, we're getting the feedback with the special ed advisory council and the feedback then, the surveys that we had sent, that was a lot of the things that we were hearing in the survey from the ed techs. And as, we want to keep the awesome ed techs that we have, and so if there's a way that we can work, or work with this, I think it would behoove us, did I use that word correctly?
Yes, you did. Thank you. I agree.
And so my second item is to increase the CHITS, well, actually not the CHITS portion, that before and after school, mostly to help with the busing, and due to the shortness of staffing for busing, busing has changed some of the routes. They've, we're extending the increased per, amount for before and after school, and keeping that going at the increased rate to make sure that we have coverage to wait for the buses after their times are normally leaving. So we're just, this has been something we've been actually doing every year or every semester since COVID hit, and so this is just continuing that for another semester. And you'll probably see me back here in January.
Make a recommendation to approve the compensation for additional COVID-19 stipend extension for a semester as presented.
I'll second.
Kelly? All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next up is, I do want to make the school committee aware and, note to the volume of the donated, make the school committee aware of a donation we received, and also due to the volume of what we received, have the school committee vote to accept this donation. Big thank you to our technology director, Carrie Hansen, as well as our SRTC network coordinator, instructor Frederick Gluck. We were able to secure, from a local business, Bottom Line Technologies in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, donated 18 almost-new Cisco Network switches to the school district. As I mentioned, a big thank you to Fred Gluck for facilitating that donation. We have 15 9300 Class 48 ports and 39300 Class 24 points. And so those will be used. SRTC networking class is going to keep the three 24-port switches for classroom use, and our IT staff will be identifying places to install the 48-port switches for daily use in our district network. Most likely, those will be at Sanford Middle School and Sanford High School. These switches are less than two years old and are of a class that matches with our newest Cisco switches in the district. And so, just to give people an idea about what we're able, what was donated to us, if we were to purchase those new, it would have cost us probably somewhere between $125,000 and $150,000. So a big thank you to John Falcone at Bottom Line Technologies. I have been able, as well as Freddie Gluck, to send him a thank you. But that's one donation we're able to receive. And then another one comes from our friends in RSU-15. That's the Gray New Gloucester School District. And they had used a grant to upgrade their laptop iPad charging carts. And so what they did was they offered us their original ones free of charge. And guess what? We just happened to be in need of carts for classroom use at the middle school. And so we've been gradually picking up those carts from Gray New Gloucester, and we expect to have 40, I think we just got word that we had another 11 on top of that. So that's going to allow our fifth, sixth, seventh classrooms in the library at Sanford Middle School. And so, as I said, these are things that if we were to purchase, would probably cost almost $30,000 with that. And so this is going to create a lot more savings in time by decreasing the amount of damage that are caused by our Chromebooks going home with students with that. So those are two things, donations that are pretty significant. And so knowing that, I'd ask the school committee, my, the recommendation is for the school committee to accept the donation to the Sanford School Department with those above-mentioned switches and our charging carts.
I just have a comment. I, I just want to thank them as a mother of middle school students and has wanted this to happen all school year, last year. I am so grateful for this donation so that these iPads can stay at the school and will not be broken in my home. So thank you, RSU-15. And I will make the recommendation to accept the donation to the Sanford High, or Sanford School Department for the above switches and charging carts.
And I will accept that. Second that, sorry. I agree with you. I'm glad they don't have to come home anymore.
Me too.
I'm sure we all are.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
No old business. Give me a second here. Resignations and retirement.
Sure. So what we have here is all mainly resignations. Asia Namy is social worker for the Bridge. Heather Kokler is a school counselor in the Esser position at the middle school. Riley Calder, English teacher, Esser position at the middle school. Catherine Eckervari, Esser position at the middle school. Shaylen Gagnon, school counselor, Esser position for our elementary. Nicole Hill, first grade teacher, Esser at Carl J. Lamb. Sarah Clinahan, librarian at Carl J. Lamb. Ashley Baker, Matt Toth is ed techs, SRTC for Esser. Erin Campbell, ed tech two, literacy at Pride. Devin Garabedian, kitchen personnel at Carl J. Lamb. Josh Allen is the first team boys' basketball coach at the high school. Marie Mondello, kitchen personnel at Carl J. Lamb. Teresa Ectrogen, kitchen personnel at Margaret Chase Smith. Jacob Stevens, second shift custodian at the middle school. Kim Rutherford as the IEP 504 coordinator at Margaret Chase Smith. Debbie Little, ed tech two for special ed in the kindergarten functional life skills at Carl J. Lamb. Amanda Marsters, kitchen personnel at the high school. Diana Allen, middle school cross-country coach at the middle school. Caitlin Brunel, first grade classroom teacher at Carl J. Lamb. Shayna Vieira, second shift custodian at the high school, and Kristen Jane's special ed, a grade level, grade level leader at Sanford Pride. So as I mentioned, a lot of hiring. There are some appointments I'd like to announce. Ed tech two at Carl J. Lamb, Taylor Billyou. Reese Grace is the college and career advisor for the adult education at SCAE. Mason Resendez, second shift custodian at Pride. Daryl LaJoy, second shift custodian at SCAE Bridge and Central Office. Justin Barker, ed tech three at the middle school. Kate Coffin, administrative assistant for the school year over at Sanford Pride. Catherine Pulli would be ed tech in an Esser position at the high school. Randy White as a student success center, ed tech three at the high school. Stephanie Wilson, ed tech three at the middle school. Jeff Perry helping out the performing arts center as a lighting designer. Margaret Jagger is ed tech three and a self-contained grade one and two over at Pride. Sandra Hewitt, middle school ed tech for the Bridge program. Kaylee Frye, JV field hockey coach at the high school. Bethany Delia Crochet, ed tech one at Carl J. Lamb. Michelle St. Pierre, kitchen personnel at C.J.L. Lindsay Goodwin, ed tech two, literacy at Pride. Caitlin Waterhouse, running the CACFP project for food service at Sanford High School. Carissa Lauren, kitchen personnel at MCS. Pam Snow, ed tech two at the middle school. Barbara Dumont, ed tech three at the middle school. Christina Mitchell, special education ed tech two at MCS. Leah Caverno, ed tech three, self-contained K and one at Pride. Erica Berry, kitchen personnel at Pride. Melanie Taylor, ed tech one, Esser position at Carl J. Lamb. Tiffy Winchenbach, kitchen personnel part-time at MCS. Stephanie Wilson, long-term substitute for the SEAL team at the middle school. William Timmons, ed tech two for the Bridge. And Susan Lincoln, literacy ed tech two at MCS. So as I mentioned earlier in the hiring, a lot of hiring going on, and you can see a lot of those ed tech positions being filled. Some staff transfers to announce. Melissa Plattner is moving from a school council position at the high school to a social worker, special education at the high school in an Esser position. Jessica Giles moving from the MCS kitchen to a job share in the, with Terry Estrogen in the, in the kitchen at MCS. Katie Spollick is going from the Pride kitchen to the C.J.L. kitchen. Karen Gelbear from a increase in hours at C.J.L. from four to five. Christine DeSimino from increasing hours at Pride. Beth Courier moving from the behavior interventions at the middle school back to the resource room at the special education at Sanford Middle School. Ethan Gwynn moving from a grade five teacher to a grade seven math teacher at the middle school. Lacey Vaccaro is moving from a sub in the kitchen to the Pride kitchen. Jesse Alair from a grade four teacher at the middle school. Jessie Alair from a grade four teacher at MCS to a grade five teacher at the middle school. Mason Resendez from a second shift custodian at Pride to second shift at MCS. And Kayla Tremblay from an ed tech one Esser position to an ed tech two Esser position at Carl J. Lamb. There are some nominations. School committee took action at the June 5th meeting, allowing me to offer contracts to teachers to fill vacancies during the summer. And so we have issued contracts to these candidates below. But I will still ask that the school committee formally accept the nominated professional staff with a one-year probationary contract. So Jess Cormier moving from long-term substitute, moving to a long-term substitute K1 self-contained teacher at Pride. Julia Stanton also moving to a long-term special ed position at Carl J. Lamb. As Mr. Bucier said, Shana Palmer has been hired as the first 10 outreach grant coordinator. And a couple administrative positions to announce. Michael Fallon is the assistant principal at Sanford High School. Roisin McGuckin, assistant principal at Margaret Chase Smith School. Beth Laterno as the pre-K through grade 12 director of school counseling for our district. Matt Kramer in an Esser position at the high school for English language arts. Alyssa Higby, a grade four classroom teacher at Lamb. Amy Felker is a school counselor at the high school. Colin Harris, a grade seventh ELA, grade seven ELA teacher at the middle school. Thomas Shan as a bridge counselor. Sally Corless moving to attendance coordinator at the high school. And Aaron Stam is a high school teacher for the bridge. Aaron used to be in the Sanford School Department years ago and will be returning. So recommendation would be to accept the nominated professional staff I just listed as with one-year probationary contracts.
I move to accept the nominated professional staff as presented by Mr. Nelson.
I second it.
I'm going to abstain.
All in favor? All in favor? Okay, moving on. No policies and procedures to talk about. Jen, did you have something? Oh, that's later. Items for future agendas.
I propose that for items for future agenda, we revisit the district cellphone policy.
No, I think what we'll want to do is that would probably be also discussed at the policy committee level in our next policy committee meeting and then be able to provide an update on that in terms of at least a plan, I guess, in terms of. I don't expect that we'll be able to bring that on our September 11th meeting for action. But I think it's going to be on the radar for us to be able to start bringing that policy back up for us to be able to look at that and then be able to go through our process to see if there's going to be.
And I just want to add that I want folks to understand the context of that proposal, which was came out of that all-day Wednesday meeting. So this isn't being driven specifically by school committee members, but rather by the feedback from building staff, specifically administrative staff. And as a school committee, we are looking for any and all ways that we can support our staff in their roles as administrators and teachers as educators. And it was something that came up that, you know, I feel passionately about visiting so that they feel heard pertaining to that talking point.
Amy?
I would just say that I completely agree. Yeah. That we need to look into that.
I felt very strongly after that meeting that that was something that we needed to revisit.
And I don't think Sanford School Department by doing that is out there by ourselves. You're noticing that that is being other school districts are also using that opportunity to look at that as we're all seeing the seeing technology and its role and its impacts on our learning environments. And so I think it just makes sense for us to be able to begin that process, to be able to examine what we have and then if there are going to be changes also involving our stakeholders. That was something we had done years ago when we did make an update and change to that policy. But as we all know, there's been a lot of time gone by and a lot of changes since then. So I think it makes a lot of sense for us to take on this process again.
Calendar announcements.
Just as I already mentioned with the opening of school here, new teacher orientations this Thursday, school committee is invited. If you're available to come welcome our new staff, they'll be arriving 7:15 to 8 o'clock. We'll do some introductions at 8:00 and then a welcome to them. And that part of the they'll be with us all day. But I think school committee, if you're available anytime between 7:15 and 8:30, you're more than welcome. And then I mentioned the two in-service days for our teachers and ed techs. That'll be next Monday and Tuesday. That will begin with a district-wide welcome on Monday, the 28th, kicking off in the Performing Arts Center at 8:00 a.m. And school committee is once again invited to that district-wide welcome. And then we also have upcoming the Labor Day holiday on the 4th. And what we do with that would normally be the first Monday. And that first Monday is normally a school committee meeting, but since it's a holiday, we'll bump that meeting to the 11th. And so in September, we're going to have back-to-back meetings in the second and third Monday on September 11th and September 18th. Will those meetings will take the traditional format that we've used in the past, where we'll have the opening of school and updates. We'll have our school administrators. Zach Lemlin will also give an athletic update on those two different Mondays. We'll break that up. As we move into October, one of the plans that we have this year would be the first meeting of the month would be more of our traditional meeting here, business. But that second meeting of the month, typically the third Monday of the month, that is going to be more of a workshop-based model with the idea of focusing on those areas and those things that will probably have some budget implications when we start our budget work in in January. That will allow us to get out in front of that with information. And I also could potentially see in addition to that, other topics that we come back into that would impact the district, everything from as we've talked about tonight, mission and vision, and maybe even cellphone policy in terms of being able to use that as an opportunity for us to really dig into particular items, important items.
Can I just say one more thing before the meeting ends? Anybody looking for anything fun to do this Thursday? The boys varsity soccer team has a scrimmage against South Portland at Alumni Stadium at 6:30.
Okay, I'm looking to adjourn this meeting. Recommendation to adjourn it at 7:30. Thank you, everybody. Lots of work done this summer. Ready for a new year.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, everybody.